Hello, everyone. Welcome to our study session. So this is March fifth, twenty twenty five, and we are in the middle of a match. Let's see what we got going on here. Uh, we're on roll. We own a two cube, first game of a five point match. How do we get all these big stacks? I don't know. Maybe we gotta do something about that. We're on roll. And pretty sure we're not gonna be doubling here, right? So let's. Let's get rolling here. Think we're gonna try to prevent this checker from escaping. He can attack. Uh, hold on, maybe we should consider a cube. Rick, we have some, some numbers that will attack ones, fives and sixes. Got some other good numbers. Double threes would be great. Maybe I was too hasty. Yeah, let's put this up to a vote. Now we own a cube, so we'd be redoubling. Alright, so we'll get our, we'll get our voting underway with the, with the cube.
Uh, I'm not feeling, if we miss this. We're, we are behind in the race, or maybe it's not even so. And given the four point board, I don't know. How much I wanna hit loose on that checker, so. I'm not thinking it's a good redouble.
Okay, even with that blot hanging out over there?
Yeah, because it's behind a broken six prime, so even if we hit it, you know, okay, but he comes back in our two point board. I'm loving it.
Okay. Alright, well, we've got mostly votes to not to redouble, so let's go ahead and roll.
You even think we're a favorite?
Um, we could be because of our attack potential. You know, the race is close. We're down seven, but we're on roll, so that's worth something. And. So the race is about even and we could, we could get some attacking. I, I'm, I'm thinking where we might be a small favorite at best, but, but you're right, maybe we're not even a favorite. Okay, so let's roll.
What did the, what did they say about doubling?
Uh, I think we have to make our, we have to make our checker play first and then we.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric.
Yes, see, look how terrible this role is.
Well, it's a Jason role. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not really thrilled about hitting loose, um, but I don't know what else to do, like.
Is there a safe play?
I'll see one.
The, well, closest to a safe is twelve, eleven, eight, four. Yeah. We played twelve, eleven.
Twelve, eleven.
All the numbers, right? Uh, six, two and double fours.
About twelve, eleven, twelve, eight. That only leaves the one blot out there.
That, that leaves two of them.
Oh, wait, you're right. Never mind.
We need to hit. Sometimes you need to hit because you, you know, if you're behind in the race, you have to hit because otherwise that checker is just gonna escape. If we hit on the three point, we're giving them a. What fourteen numbers to hit us, all ones, two, one and double ones.
You already counted one.
Um, indeed, I did.
Oh, all threes for me.
All threes, two, one and double ones. Yeah, okay, fourteen. So I don't know. Is that a lot? So here's what it looks like if we hit. And here's what, what it looks like if we just, uh, now what's this way? That big stack on the four point is kind of unfortunate and also not great for the race. Alright. I don't know. Okay, it looks like the votes are for to play safe. That board over there is too threatening, so let's do that. Eight, four, twelve, eleven. Let's see how. See how we fare. Okay, so let's go back and look at the cube. Uh, not close. So we were a small favorite, fifty-seven percent. There's not many gamins in the offing here. And the move. Yeah. Definitely right to play safe. In fact, there's that other play that Wes suggested. Half-heartedly. Twelve, eleven, twelve, eight. That came out second place, but hitting is a blunder because of just how strong the opponent's board is. And now it just got stronger. Now they have a full five point board. Okay, so if we weren't doubling before, we're not, definitely not doing it now, so let's roll. Six, three.
Big five.
That looks like it plays itself, right? Now our position is not that terrible. We've got a prime. We filled in a gap. This is pretty good.
Can, can you go back to the analysis of our, um, twelve, eleven? Um. It, we have an. Under fifty percent chance of winning. And they have more gamins than we do, but we're positive, um. Expected value this.
Right.
I'm missing something.
Cube ownership.
Valid. That's it. That cube ownership is prized a lot in that, then.
Yeah, right. Okay, so should we just make the five point? That's it? We don't need to vote on this, do we?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, let's go for it. Alright. Could we even consider a cube here? Is that too crazy? Or.
Roll double ones or double sixes?
Double ones, double sixes, double fives?
I'm in favor of a cube.
Six, one. Five, one. We actually have a lot, a lot more pretty good numbers now. We, we might wanna. We might wanna consider this. I think this is gonna be better than the last time.
I think I could be comfortable cubing if from a, a first cube, not for a recube.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah.
We just saw how.
Right, so in general, when you own the cube, you're less likely to send the cube over because you're. You're giving back cube ownership or, or cube access. If I apply position, race and threats, I think we're not there because. Our opponent has a better board. We do not have race. We certainly have threats and we have a lot of them. Uh, we mentioned them, uh, five, one, six, one, double ones, double sixes, double fives. That sounds like seven. It's pretty good. Um, double threes makes eight. Uh. Double twos actually pretty good. We'd probably shift and make the two point. Hmm, maybe there's more than that. Okay, so if you haven't voted, go ahead and vote now. More votes to redouble than I would have thought. Okay, that's five votes are in. Three to two in favor of rolling the dice. Okay, let's go for it. Let's roll. Six, five.
There you go, you got him.
I didn't even count that one. I should have counted that one.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's easy, right? Just make the three point.
Two six for them.
Yeah. Two, six from the bar.
But here's your, um, before, well, I guess you could go back, but you were gonna check on the cube decision.
Yeah, after we make the checker play. It just doesn't show up. You can't, you can't actually see it. It's just a thing in the, uh, in the program. Okay, so let's go back and look. It's close. It's getting there. Just not quite.
Probably close enough that it would have been a cube from a first turn.
Uh, I don't know. Would you like to find out? So this is the position. We'll put the, we'll put the cube in the middle, so. So Rick, are you saying you think it might be a cube from the middle?
I think it might be a cube from, if it's on one, but not if it, not if we possess it.
Okay, well, let's take a look. Still not a redouble.
That, that's.
Our winning chances are just aren't, aren't high enough. Mid-sixties, you're just not quite there.
But it, it's more of a no double now than it was before. That I don't get.
Hmm. Yeah, I don't have a good answer for you. Alright, uh, back to where we were.
Because their recube isn't as strong anymore.
Um.
Oh, they have a recube, a possibility now, which they didn't have. And if it was on four in an eight point match, is that what you're saying, Mike?
Right, that they doesn't gain, you know, they're gonna double, redouble anytime they're the favorite. But, uh, now that, uh, those overs points don't matter as much, don't come.
I was gonna say, it's gotta have something to do with, with the map score, right?
Yeah, yeah. If it's a weaker.
Thank you, yeah. Our take point on an eight cube is, is pretty low, so it takes them a while to get to their doubling. So they don't have nearly as much, uh, value out of the cube.
And, and I'm only on chapter one of Nick Blazer's book, so.
Alright, so they fanned and now. Maybe we have to cube now? I don't know.
Well, now we have the race, which we slightly, instead of being slightly behind, our position is much better.
And they're on the bar. Um. One of the things that might make you not redouble, maybe if you think you're too good. Okay, we're voting. We got, uh, some votes to redouble. Three votes to send the cube over. Okay, a lot of votes to redouble. Okay, let's send it over. And they passed. Okay, let's take a look at the. Yeah. Pretty, pretty big redouble here. I know, sorry. Big, big pass. Uh, the cube is closed because we're, we're pretty much, we're past our, uh. Our doubling window and.
I started to say when I was on mute, Jason, that's probably not too good because of that stack on the four point.
Yeah.
That's, I bet you have to put those checkers on the four point. And distribute them on the five and the six. That's too good. Uh, but that's too good, then.
Alright, let's take a look at that.
Oh, shoot, you don't have to do what I say, but I'm just thinking that that would make.
I'm too late, too late, though. I'm gonna do what you said. Okay, so let's take, you wanna do like that, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing that might be too good.
Yeah, I, I can, I could believe that. Let's take a look. Yep, right, right on the edge.
We'd have to wonder why my, why my cube play during the BMAB sucks so bad if I can recognize these differences here, but apparently over the board, I'm capable of making the correct decision.
Well, well, you know, it's all different in the heat of the battle, right? Alright, let's get back to the game. Okay, so we just won two points, so now we're ahead three away, five away. Alright, since we're ahead, I think we definitely wanna split. Uh, this, this one, this is one of my favorite opening roles. Four, one split. Actually, this might be my favorite opening role. Four, one split and then followed by a four, three. Very few. People really know to do this play, to hit loose on the two point. Um. Mike Fujita posted a link to a video that I made with, um, Alex Ashigian. And I did another one with Alex a few months ago about playing four, three on the second roll, and we talked about this play. If you play what, what looks like a pretty reasonable looking play like this. The problem with doing this is that red now has so many good numbers. Well poised to make a point, to attack, to hit a blot. Almost everything plays well, and so the whole purpose behind hitting on the two point, it's not that hitting on the two point is so great. It's not. It's pretty awful, actually, hitting loose on the two point. The, what's good about this is it prevents your opponent from doing something useful. And I'll point out, the difference is quite large. I mean, it's just about thirty milli points difference. For a second roll, that's a big difference. And if you're, if you're coughing up, um. Thirty milli points on, on the regular, uh, that, that's a lot. This is such a weird play. It's also right to do this, um, if your opponent splits with a two, one. Uh, Alex and I talked about, uh, several of these plays. Weird play, right?
Very. Because you're burying a checker, right?
You're burying a checker. It's, it's not in a good place.
You're gonna have to make that point now at some point, and you're probably gonna have a better use for a four or six somewhere else. To make it that point and.
That's so. There's duplication involved here, too.
Okay.
So you're duplicating the twos, um, to enter and hit the twos. You're also duplicating the twos that you want. Um, to hit on the four point. So watch, when we roll something with a two in it, what are we gonna do? Like now. Right? We can't do both things. In fact, this is, this is a pretty lousy follow-up, right?
Jason, is that move good with a two, one, four, one and five, one?
Uh, no, I don't believe you do it with a five, one.
Okay.
And the reason is, like, if, if you open with a five, one, you're, uh, the checkers on your side are not, not well placed. You're, you're gonna have a stack on the eight. It's not so urgent to disrupt your opponent.
Okay.
Alright, what are we gonna do now?
Double hit.
We can't.
Oh, we're on the bar.
And that, this is, this kinda illustrates one of the reasons why you need to hit loose on the two point. This, it disrupted our, uh, our position.
Well, I think we're definitely gonna hit.
Right?
Yeah.
Agree.
Where?
I, how about hit on the twenty-three and advance to the twenty?
Advance to the twenty, okay. It's a pretty reasonable play.
I, I kinda like, I don't know why I like hitting on the twenty-three and. Playing twenty-four, twenty-one, just trying to make, uh, keep that.
Get a high anchor, maybe.
A high anchor doesn't look to get your, get you hit the, like, get attacked the next time and it's, I don't know.
Alright, here's, here's the one where you go to the twenty point. Alright, I can see one tactical disadvantage of this. Uh, we just duplicated our own fours. We need fours to make the, uh, the golden point anchor and fours to make the nine point. We'd really like to be able to do both.
I would have played twenty, hit on the twenty-three and played twenty-four, twenty-one, so makes the twos that are otherwise not useful.
Alright, alright, but now I do wanna point out an advantage of this is another form of duplication, which is duplicating our opponent's threes. They're gonna want threes. Potentially to make their advanced anchor on their twenty-one point and threes now to attack our blot. Okay, now let's look at, let's look at, uh, Bill Spruce's other play here, coming here.
I'm not playing.
It's too late, Billy, you already, you put it out in the universe.
And there it is.
Well, now our twos are good, our fours are good.
Yeah. Um. You could say we're duplicating fours. They wanna enter with a four and make that anchor and maybe attack us with fours. And then I, I threw in one more play, which is to attack on the four point. I don't know, this is a good idea. Maybe this is a very bad idea. I don't know. So I've got all of them in.
Well. Good, let's roll. If we were behind in the match instead of ahead, that might be a nice volatile play.
Yeah, it might be, right. Fight for a good point. This is, you know, Michi, Michi talks about this in his opening concepts book, fight for a good point. It's one of his proverbs in the first chapter.
Well, another one we didn't mention is making the twenty-two point.
Right, right, making the twenty-two point. When in doubt, right? You, you, it gives you. It gives you a tangible asset, right? Having that anchor.
And it makes his loose checker on the twenty-three even more of a waste at this point.
It does, but it, it does also relieve the pressure on that blot, right? It, white is now not so, um. They're not forced to cover that right away. Okay, we're voting now. We got a lot of. Divided opinions. Slightly ahead is the play that comes to the twenty point. Okay. Think we're gonna do that. Okay. Um, and it was close. Getting loose on the four point, not very good. Also. It doesn't win even as many cammens. That's interesting. So this play was actually pretty bad. And then the play that Bill suggested was a close second. Not, not surprised that that was in the running. Okay, they hit us. Well, now we're on the bar, but if we roll a five or a four, make that, make that good anchor. And there it is.
Or.
Or. Okay, so there's making the anchor. Or there's making the deep anchor and hitting on the nine point. Uh, anything else that we ought to consider? That's gotta be it, right?
Yeah.
Bill, what's your next tournament? Cherry Blossom?
Yes, sir.
Nice.
And all the stressful BMAB there with.
Yeah, good times. I think I'm, uh, not gonna be playing in the BMAB in the cherry blossom.
Sorry, I don't blame you. I know when you're scared of me.
Yeah, I know. I, I, I gotta take some of the pressure off myself, you know?
Anybody going to Ohio?
I haven't been to the Ohio tournament in many years.
I would like to, uh, Tom, but I, I have to keep the peace around the house and disappearing for another backgammon tournament's gonna get me living outside in the doghouse, as they say.
Is there a heater in your doghouse, Bill?
No.
Do your dogs play backgammon?
Are you going, Tom?
Yes.
Are you doing your? Are you doing your class?
Yeah, no workshop. We'll just be playing.
Okay.
Tom, is there a tournament you don't go to?
Um. Let me think. Um. Yes, a number of them. But I think I probably gone to eight or ten last year, something nine.
Oh, okay. So that's about half of them, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, small. By a small margin, making the anchor won the vote. Let's take a look. Woo, big difference. I guess I can say I was the deciding vote because I, I voted for bar twenty. Um, for me, the reason was. It's a, it's a permanent asset, whereas hitting on the nine point, yeah, you don't, you don't really get a good permanent asset. Yeah, you anchor, but it's, it's the, uh, the anchor you were born with. Okay, and now our opponent has made the twenty points, so here we are, mutual holding game. Which might not be such an awful thing, having a lead in the match. It, it's gonna cut down on gamins. We're gonna play kind of a boring game now. Boring is good when you lead the match, right? Okay, six and one. This looks pretty easy. I know how to play this. Everybody happy with that?
I don't see any other choice. Cause of the, really.
Okay, this one may have to talk about. I don't know.
How about we put a builder on the eight point?
Okay, seems like a pretty nice play. Are there any other candidates?
Well, once again, we've got no place for that ace, so that's kind of the only place.
Yeah.
It's kind of plays itself.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it does play itself. Alright, let's go ahead and do that. What a boring looking game.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, alright, ready for some excitement?
Yeah, yeah, by playing six to three.
Six to three, okay. Alright, I got another choice. There's. Eight, seven.
Eight, seven, six, four.
All right, seven, six, four, I guess works too.
Yeah, I like that.
That way we leave our, our, the better points slotted, and then here's the other play.
No, I, 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 I don't know why I looked at that first. I like eight to seven, six to four. That's what I would do. I would imagine, figure that out.
Alright, we can vote. Eight, seven, six, four or six to three. Alright, all, all the votes are in for eight, seven, six, four. Let's go ahead and do that. Ah, wow.
Really?
Well, uh. What's the alternative for them? I don't know.
It's a bold move, and if we miss, if, if, if we miss, we're in a little bit of, uh.
Yeah, thirteen, seven wasn't much worse for it.
No, it wasn't. Alright, well, don't miss. I missed.
You're rolling.
One, six, not two, six.
Uh, yeah. I gotta say, I, I've not been rolling well in these study sessions.
Well, we got a problem now.
Yeah. Ah, this is awful.
This is the worst. I think that's could be our worst role.
Yeah, this is where, uh.
Other than dancing with double thick.
Right, which, ah, listen, I am perfectly capable of doing that, too.
We probably were better off dancing, cause now we've gotta play the six, two, and I don't wanna.
You know what? You're right. This might be worse than dancing.
Right, we would have been better off staying on the bar and getting a better.
Well. I, is this the position where we exercise our once a match right to reroll?
Is that a new backgammon rule? I didn't see somewhere.
Oh, I, you didn't get the memo on that?
Thought we would have used it on the four, one in that last game, right, when we were considering re-cubing and then got that horrible four, one.
I had a nice fellow from Canada that kept saying, you know, I kept rolling bad things, and he said, well, if this were Canada, you'd be able to reroll that.
Those Canadians are so nice.
It was really cute, yeah.
Okay, so we're coming in, um, what about thirteen, seven?
And there's no reason to leave another blot out here, is there?
Well, okay.
Point, seven, one, maybe?
We got a party back there, so why not?
Okay, and then, so Bill, if you don't like thirteen to seven, you're really not gonna like this.
No, I don't like that at all.
Okay.
I know what I'd like.
Well, we've already got three back. What would it hurt to have another one back? At distribution, looks a lot better coming thirteen. At distribution looks a lot better coming thirteen to seven than it does bury in the seven.
Oh, so Tom, you like thirteen, seven?
I do.
He's the more funner of the bunch. I prefer not getting hit again or breaking my mid.
Well, I don't know. Uh, when I see three back, I'm not sure four back makes it any worse. It just provides more obstruction for them.
And a chance to make a second point back there.
Yes.
They roll downstairs.
Bill, do you think you have more fun playing backgammon than Tom or vice versa?
I think.
I have obsessive compulsive disorder.
All right. Are we voting? Let's do it. Oh, Tom has put in his vote for thirteen, seven. I saw it pop up. I know that was him.
Oh, yeah.
We're tied now. Need one more vote to break the tie.
Uh, uh, I suggest a cage match.
Oh, seven to one has pulled ahead. Is that it? Is everybody uh cast their vote?
Hey, look, I don't love seven one either. Bearing a checker makes me cautious, but I I don't know what else to do.
Okay, we're tied, and look, Adam Brechner has just showed up. Adam, guess what? You're gonna break the tie.
Okay.
All right. We're we're coming in off the bar, and now we got a six to play.
Oh, my gosh, y'all, okay. Uh, what's the score? Three away, five away? We're heading the score?
Yeah.
And what what's the race score?
Let's see, we're gonna be. Or it's gonna be even after we make the play.
I'd go seven to one.
Okay, done it is.
There you go.
All right, I I I was siding with Tom.
To do what? What was the other option?
Thirteen, seven.
Oh, yeah, no.
Oh, look at this, Tom, you and I are. Taking a small bite of the burger.
I I I thought it was pretty small. I I I'm surprised it was only there.
It's not, it's not the whole burger, Tom. It's just, you know, a bite of the burger, a couple of fries.
It's the cheese. That's it. That's you'd normally. Which burger are you biting into? Humble Burger or Eating Crow?
Yeah, yeah, that that one.
Now, what Adam said there was wonderful, because we did this a lot with the novices this last weekend. When we had a workshop was. Taught them that every time when they wanna know what the move was, we say, what's the match score? Cause I always say, whenever you're getting advice. They're gonna eh they're gonna tell you all the time, what's the match score? So that's the perfect, perfect answer.
Yeah, and and if the answer is, I don't know what the match score is, then. Uh, Houston, we've got a problem. All right, well, they covered their blots, including that that ace point, so maybe we ought to consider covering some blots here. That might do it. Couple, a couple of good options here.
Couple. Six to four, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Okay, that seems like a pretty good.
That gives your sixes, you can get out with sixes.
Right. Okay, we could clean up all the blots on the front side with four to one.
No.
You could also twenty, you could go twenty-three, twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty is also a a pretty reasonable option.
I'd be more, I'd feel that more urgency in that if he had any spares in his outfield, which he doesn't, so.
Right, that's right. So since white is stripped, you don't have so much urgency to clean up this lot here.
Correct.
I I like that. I like that observation.
Yeah, over the board, I would be playing six to four, twenty-three. Twenty-two because.
Yeah, the only, uh, go ahead, Bill.
I'm just saying, I would have. I I I know that is at this point in my game, that's how I would have been thinking in my backgammon life. I would have thought that way. I would have said, you know. Getting that checker to the twenty point. Isn't as urgent because there's no spare. He can't point on head. I mean, he could, but he's gonna have to break seventeen his. Seven, eh his seven and eight point. So I I I'm not as scared. To to leave that checker. Not, I don't, I'm not as scared to scared to. I don't feel it necessary right the second to go twenty-three, twenty. That's all.
Also, the also the race is even, so it's not like you're you're jumping into a running game. Now, I think I think Bill's got a, I think Bill's got a good argument, and here's the important thing about what Bill's doing here is, he's gotten, he's got an answer. Listen, maybe Bill's right, maybe he's wrong, but he's got an answer. He's not just going on gut. He's got a a a reason to back it up with.
I have ideas, half the wrong time, wrong.
Tom, don't we wanna leave our goaltender back there?
Well, that's my only uh negative part of the play. I think you want the four point. Uh, because you wanna even the boardage out. At and the only thing I'd think is I'd move up from twenty-three to twenty-two is my goalie's less effective.
I agree. I don't like bringing them all the way to the twenty at all.
Sometimes you gotta do that, though.
Teresa, another thing is, you know, you really want a goalkeeper if you're way behind in the in the race. But that's not really the case here. We're uh, we're a little bit behind. But we we've got a lot of different ways to win the game. So by stepping up to the twenty-two point, what you're doing is you're you're giving yourself flexibility to try to win the game in multiple ways.
Oh, I agree with stepping up to twenty-two. I just don't agree with going to the twenty.
Yeah, all right. Okay, let's. Are we, are we ready to vote? There's already a couple of votes in. All the votes, yeah, all right. We got eight votes in, all for. This compromise play. Let's, let's see how we did. Uh, wow, look at that, tied with twenty-three, twenty.
Really? Hey, to be a favorite, can you real quick put a put a spare on this uh on his eight point?
Yeah, okay, we're gonna validate everything.
And I bet thou making the making the golden point or. Putting that on the check on the twenty point becomes correct, I bet you.
All right, what do you wanna do? You wanna take, let's take.
Take a spare from the mid, right, and put it eh either of those two points, and I bet.
Let's put it like right here. How's that?
Twenty-three, twenty becomes correct, I bet you it does.
I bet you're right. Uh-oh.
Now it's not.
Now it's less.
Interesting. Why?
Um. Okay, I'll tell you why. It's because. Uh, that made, it changed the race.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this. Let's put one of our.
Not now or farther?
Yeah, we're further behind. Let's put one of our checkers on the midpoint. Now let's look at it. There you go. This is what you wanted, Bill. Because by moving that checker from the midpoint down, it it changed the race too much. Oh, it's still not the. What do we know?
Nothing.
Apparently nothing.
Okay.
It's it's too close to work, not, it's too close to worry about, but um.
Yeah, you're right.
But it is interesting.
As a general guise for how we handle this position, where's the game right now?
Um, wh- what do you mean, where's the game?
I think it's in the outfield, right?
Oh, oh, that's what you mean, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So that would explain uh seven to one over thirteen to seven. You're completely giving up the infield. Um, that explains why you want, they're moving from twelve to eighteen, our our situation, because they've actually lost a little bit of. Control on the outfield, but gained in attacking in their board, but you know, they've lost the outfield. But I think.
We don't have spares on the midpoint, so we're gonna have a hard time with that that outfield control. Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Right.
And does that explain why we're an underdog here?
It's not big, though, is it? Yeah.
No, it's not a big, it's just, I'm, it's it's a, we're a slight underdog.
Yeah. Uh, I think partly because of the race here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. All right, so they played, uh, they're gonna play thirteen, ten with a two, one. Okay, now we're on roll. Ooh. Ooh.
Very interesting.
Twenty sixteen twice, thirteen, nine twice?
See if we had any other choice, do we?
Like a pretty good play.
Say that again, Rick? Advancing from the twenty to sixteen and the thirteen to the nine. Oh, yeah. You have to abandon the five point, which we want, but it's at least getting us. A lot in return.
Rick, I don't, I don't actually see there's any other reasonable uh thing to do, is there?
That's the main thing for.
Yeah, like. We wouldn't certainly dump any of those checkers behind the their five-point anchor at this point, so that's kind of the only thing we got.
Is there any consideration to make in this play?
I, yeah, I like that.
Okay, Teresa, in conjunction with what?
Seven, three.
What about the other two? Sixteen, seven to three. Okay, I'm gonna put Teresa's play in there. Teresa, tell me, tell us why you like that play.
Because I don't wanna abandon the midpoint yet.
You don't wanna give up your midpoint, I see.
They've got, they've got five uh five checkers still.
Right, and so.
It does keep communication with your rear checkers still, too.
Uh-huh.
And we have the eight point. But that's what I think.
And, okay, the other good thing about this is it strengthens your inner board, so now, now we got boardage, right? Okay, now, I I wanna talk about some downsides of this play. It may be a little bit more difficult to get all of these checkers around. We only have this one landing spot here. When we do this. It's a lot more landing spots to get checkers uh around. We do have a slight race lead now, so we're gonna be playing for that.
Actually, almost always likes making a. Four point five or four, if you, if it's available, I I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, three point, that three-point landing spot's not gonna last for long.
Why not, Tom?
Uh, well, I don't think you're gonna wanna run your back checkers out just yet. Uh, unless you roll whatever.
Are we moving twenty to sixteen?
Yeah, we are, but I don't know if you wanna abandon that last one, is what I'm saying. It's not in direct communication at seven away from the nine. Um, whether you're gonna wanna actually break the nine versus move. Uh, you know, from the sixteen.
Okay, Tom, what's your play then? What do you like?
I kinda like Teresa's play.
Okay.
So we all agree that twenty to sixteen is the right thing.
It does seem that way, yeah. We seem to be in agreement about that.
Yeah, I like outboarding them.
Tom likes his boardage. Okay, let's vote.
What, are we behind?
Are we behind? No, we're we're gonna be ahead by ten pips after the roll. So we gotta, we have a small race lead. I think also after, if we make this play, we'll have pretty good forward structure. Uh, you know, we have a, we have a pretty compact position. They got their ace point made. That has to be a liability for them, right? We have a checker on the ace point. That's, that's not great. All right, I think the votes are in to make this play, sixteen and nine, so let's, let's do it.
And I'm just gonna put in a request now for double sixes on our next roll.
Okay, duly noted.
Never mind that.
Okay. Sixteen and nine is right by a lot. Think we're trying to prime these checkers. And you know, Tom, you pointed out like, um. A communication issue with this, right? That the checkers on the sixteen point are seven away from the nine.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying, but I I think that's less of an issue than you think. I think having these three landing points is is pretty powerful. Both as landing points for racing and as as a priming. It serves sort of dual purpose.
Yeah, I guess the thing would be, I would think you wouldn't wanna break the sixteen till you extract your last checker is the problem.
Right. Okay, well, they hit us.
Not four-point prime. I've lost a lot of games thinking that I'm gonna jump a four-point prime.
Yeah, absolutely.
I rolled double fours, double threes, four, three, two, one.
Hey, there's a, there's an old backgammon adage that says, a a four prime is more than you think, and a five prime is less than you think.
Right, exactly right. Exactly right.
All right. Uh, we probably don't have a cube, though, right? I mean, we have a few numbers that are gonna hit, but we've got a lot of work to do yet. And we lead in the match, so we don't wanna get too froggy with the cube.
Agreed. I have to remind myself, keep your hands off the cube.
Yeah.
The, is that our roll, two, three?
That's it.
Keep it going to the twenty.
Do you step it up? You can get, there's a lot of danger there, but.
No other three, so you might as well leave it where there's a chance it can run.
Yeah.
Yeah, does anybody even have an alternative they wanna consider?
Oh, six to three. Never mind, sorry. Let's just go twenty-three, twenty. I never said that.
All right, looks like the votes are to come to the twenty point. I'm sure that's right. Oh, my god. What happened? Ooh. A play we didn't think about. Oh, how do you like them apples?
Oh.
So explain that one to us.
Cause you're so far behind in the race, I guess. You gotta stay back.
Uh. But we're not behind in the race before their roll.
It's above my pay grade. I don't know how to explain this one.
Is this one of those that you're willing to claim no one would actually see, only a computer would do, or is it actually a gettable move?
Um, somebody did point out, uh, that coming to the twenty point, there's some danger with that, right? There's. Twos, threes, and fives will attack. You hang back here, it's a lot harder to attack that checker.
And we still have sixes to attack their checker. On this.
I just figured it would be much more easy for us to ha- run into. A lot of bad rolls if we're back there.
I I I'm not smart enough to come up with plays like this. I'm I'm ready to just concede this.
Uh, this is an XG play.
Uh. I don't know, I mean, that's, that was Rick's question, and I I I don't know. I don't know, Rick.
Okay.
But uh, n- now we are definitely behind, and so now this is.
I mean, I mean, it's the right play if I knew who's gonna roll double sixes.
Of course, yes.
And I'm not sure we're that in a bad position, cause they're gonna have a hard time getting those five checkers around.
Uh, but we're still an underdog, right?
Right.
But we're gonna. If Ja- if if Jason knew the answer, he wouldn't be here wasting time with us. I think we have a lot of good things that could happen now.
Yeah, we're about to make our five point.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, told you.
Do it from the nine, just roll them in.
Okay, let's just do that first. And now, so Rick, you're saying you just wanna do this?
Yeah.
Why not, why not, uh, nine, seven, five, six, four? Leave it on the nine, leave it back on the nine.
All right, so let me see if I understand. Adam, your play is to do what?
No, 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 yeah, yeah, then go, uh, nine, seven, six, four.
So your objective is working on making the three point more than the bar, is that right?
Any, any other point, making any of those points.
Get back to Leah tomorrow and give her.
Okay, all right, so. Um, Adam, let me give you an alternative. How about this?
Okay, yeah, same, same sort of thing.
Same, same concept, or similar concept.
But yeah, I'd like to make more inner board points.
Is there anything that they can roll that will leave a blot right now?
Six, five, six, no, uh. Six, two would not be great for them.
Five, three, no.
Oh, no, it wouldn't be a blot, though. I'd go twenty-one, twenty-three, spot double fours, maybe, no, double fours are fine.
Looks like they can survive this round.
Okay, so if they're not leaving a shot right now, it's not so urgent for us to tighten everything up, right?
Um, six, two, no, no, so we can get that too.
Basically, our shot's not coming right now. Of course, we also, we also might be facing a cube next roll, who knows?
Are we voting?
Yeah, let's vote. All right, it's uh five minutes to six, so we better make this the last play, and everybody wants to just. Go to the five point. Okay, let's do it. Okay, we're gonna stop here. Uh, we got this one, right? All right, looks pretty good. PR's a. Three. I'll take that. All right, we'll pick this up next week in this uh mutual holding game. Uh, we're. We're a little behind in the race. Gotta do something about that soon.
We're not in a tough spot.
No, we're doing okay.
What's our win percentage right now?
Well. After they played thirteen to six, our winning percentage was is forty-three percent. You'll take that, right?
Yeah.
Not bad. All right, that's a good place to stop.
They're not gonna double us anytime soon.
No, they're not, probably not. Okay, see you all next week then.